My apologies to the audience, at being two minutes after six, we will officially convene the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for March 20th, 2019. Could we have a roll call, Sherri?
Chair Quillisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Powers.
Here.
Jeggyello.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Lottis.
Here.
One vacancy.
Very good. And next is our Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Lottis, would you lead us, please?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you very much. Before we get into public communications, Mr. Connolly, you had a request to make.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to let people know who are not already aware that item number three, the concept review, has been postponed and will not be a hearing item tonight. And as I said, it's postponed, not continued to a date certain, which means we will re-notice the project when it is ready to come before the Planning Commission. So I'm sorry if anybody showed up here tonight for just that item. We tried to get the word out, but I know there may be some people who are already on their way. So just to repeat, that will not be heard at all this evening.
And so we will dispense with item three, but follow the agenda otherwise. Our first item is a consent -- oh, I'm sorry. Our first item is public communications, of course. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. And with this, item three is no longer a scheduled agenda item for this evening. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the Commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. I have one card for public communications. Mr. Daddy.
Since item three is gone, then I can speak in open session, and it's going to be about item three. I'm concerned about how we write these reports and how we write these items that come before you and come before the public. When we see things in here that have certain words that I can't answer, I get concerned. When I take a look at passages and links that say things like "senior custom home sites", everybody want to give me an answer of what that is, what the code is, what page I find it on? So I understand that a lot of people in this community are very unhappy with the number of results coming out of the Planning Commission, but I can understand when we don't get references, we don't get guides, we don't get material we need. When we have a redo, which we're having a redo, my reporter couldn't find the request from City Council from 2014 for the staff to come back and answer a number of questions from that joint session. Pretty interesting, you're going to go do a concept review for something that had an incomplete -- and this is no reflection on the CDD here, you weren't here. A number of you folks weren't here, and a number of our council people weren't here. But if we're going to go ahead and separate flyspecks from pepper, what I would have appreciated is that the city be prudent enough to run the CD on the website a month before any of these hearings, so the public and you have a general or specific idea of what went on five years ago. So we don't start from the first, we don't start from the beginning, we start from the end of what wasn't complete. We always seem to do this. Now, I showed up here when we had something that was called a community center because it has a number of meanings, and it didn't have specificity. I wasn't opposed to any community center, I was opposed to the way it came through with the vagueness without citing rules. And I think we need to start doing a much better job of that, because we just cannot continue going through these meetings with the same conclusions and the same things that happened. So when we have senior community, when we have different things, when we have different issues and items, when we have these concept reviews that leave vagueness where we could actually eliminate parking on both sides of the street even for the existing residents, I think it's incumbent upon you to ask more and better questions, because these questions are on this concept review, and I didn't see where they were answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daddy. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak during public communications? All right. Seeing none, we'll close that part of the meeting -- excuse me -- and go on to our consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, February 20th. Do we have any questions from the Commissioners on this? Yes, ma'am.
I do. I went through the minutes, and I just found one minor discrepancy that I would like to have changed, and that is on page three of five. The bottom of the -- or halfway down the page, it says motion, Chair Quillisi moved. And if you go down to item one, it says the landscape plan shall be amended to eliminate one plant that I did say should be eliminated is missing, and one that could stay is there. So I'd like to add Carpinteria Californica as the --
As an eliminate?
As an eliminate, and then strike the David's Choice Sage.
Carpinteria Californica?
Mm-hmm.
So the "and" would move to ahead of California Buckwheat?
Yes.
Okay.
And I had a question, but I think that's something I probably would not be appropriate here, I guess.
I don't know.
Let me ask this.
If it involves an amendment to the minutes.
Is it okay to ask a question about that project now, or is that just not -- if it's not appropriate, I won't?
If you're talking about the last sentence of item three.
Yes, that's what it was about.
I have asked.
Oh, you did ask. Okay, so I haven't underlined, and I guess my question was, so are they operating under a temporary permit presently because they haven't complied? Is that what's going on there? I say ahead, "no."
That's a good question for staff.
Yeah.
Right, so we're talking about question three, I believe, yeah.
Yes.
The phrase is, "they're under a temporary certificate of occupancy," is what the business is operating under right now.
That's what I thought, okay.
Correct.
That was my question. Thanks.
And it doesn't become permanent until all these things are fixed? Right.
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions or changes to the minutes? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve them as amended.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as amended.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll make a second.
All right. Any other discussion of the minutes? Could we have a roll call, please?
Powers?
Yes.
Jeggyello?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Quillisi?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Okay. I'll take care of that afterwards. All right, we'll move on to our public hearing item, the item number two, sign permit S-18-026 for a comprehensive sign program for Warehouse 111. I'm sorry. Move along, he said.
[laughing]
Yes, sign permit S-19-005, revision to design review permit DRP-18006 and CUP-18004 for the yoga studio and retail office space at 915 East Ojai Avenue. Could we hear from staff, please?
Yes. The Commission is recommended to conduct a public hearing and approve a revision to the design review permit, subject to findings and conditions of approval that are attached, as well as consider an approval of a sign permit for light and space yoga studio, making the findings for the sign that it is consistent with the East End Design Guidelines and exempt from CEQA. So if you look at attachment C, there is a site plan comparison showing what was originally approved under the original DRP on page A0080.00, I'm sorry. The previously approved site plan is on the left, the proposed changes are on the right. There are changes to eliminate two parking spaces and an area of asphalt that was degraded in that front setback area along Bryant Street, and expand the fenced-in area to be flush with the Bryant Street frontage of the building. They also have reconfigured the parking that is accessed off of Ojai Avenue, better utilizing the space. They are increasing the amount of pervious surface, which would allow for better catchment of rainwater. Those are the minor changes to the plan there. It appears that the project changes are consistent with the general commercial general plan land use designation. It's located in the Bryant Industrial Area Plan and East End Design Guidelines. Staff's review of these changes appeared that these improvements are compatible and consistent with those, with the specific plan and the East End Design Guidelines, and will result in visual improvements to this key corner location at the city's eastern gateway. Those changes for the design are exempt under CEQA Section 15303, which is a Class III exemption that allows for the alterations of an existing facility, including hardscape changes. Related to the sign, they have two wall painted signs proposed. The sign guidelines excerpt for the East Ojai Avenue Design Guidelines is attachment D in your report. The criteria that are outlined in section six of the guidelines state that the sign should be pedestrian in scale. It does not really speak to wall signs, other than A4, which says wall signs should be placed to establish facade rhythm, scale, and proportion. So we're asking the Planning Commission make a determination that the sign, as proposed, a painted wall sign, or two painted wall signs is appropriate and meets these guidelines. Attachment E is the actual sign design. You can see there is a sign that is on the canopy that is more graphic in nature, and then there is a second sign that is on the main building facade, setback from the street frontage, that indicates the name of the business. They are within the maximum allowable sign area. The reason why this is before you is solely to make the determination it's consistent with the design guidelines, otherwise this would have been a ministerial permit. With that, I conclude my staff report.
Okay, do we have questions for staff? I have a couple. Oh, please go ahead.
I just had a quick question, and this was, I know that the East End Design Guidelines and the Bryant Industrial Plan apply, and is that just because it's on the corner? Or does it have to do with the direction of the door and the addresses facing, or?
The East End Design Guidelines, I believe, ends right at this corner. The Bryant Street, or the Bryant specific plan starts at this corner, goes down Bryant Street.
Okay, so it's one of those overlapping areas?
Correct.
That's what I thought, okay. Thank you.
And the Bryant Street plan is silent on signage.
Right.
Bobby, did you have a question? Oh, okay. Well, I have a couple. In the staff report, page two, where it talks about these -- section A of the guidelines, this is under sign permit, states the sign should be a wooden projecting sign where raised are routed letters, and A5 states something else again, and this appears not to be consistent with those design criteria. As I read the design guidelines, A2 encourages, but does not require handcrafted signs.
Correct.
Would that be correct? Okay. And A5 doesn't require projecting signs perpendicular to the sidewalk, it simply says that the signs should be visible to pedestrians.
Correct.
Would that be correct? And in addition, this is an area that I walk around, my wife and I walk around a lot, and I have noticed that The Nest, Azu, and In the Field, three businesses in the East End along Ojai Avenue, all have hand painted signs like this. And I'm wondering, were those ministerial decisions that allowed those changes? I mean, Azu has even changed recently, because it now says Azu and Ojai Valley Brewery, or something like that, hand painted on the front of the building. And so I'm just wondering, were those ministerial decisions, I don't remember them coming before the Commission, and if they were, were they made in spite of apparent misgivings about A2 and A5?
I can't speak to who might have approved those signs. It could have been another staff person, however.
Or an earlier administration, I don't know.
Typical, right. Typical sign permits are ministerial unless they are subject to requiring a comprehensive sign program.
Right.
So we can look at the records and determine whether those all have amended sign permits, especially Azu that has recently changed, but I can't answer whether or not we recently approved those.
It just, it seems to me that what they're asking for here has already been granted in some form to at least three other businesses in the East End.
Let me just, I had a quick one for the question.
Yes, sir.
And I can't answer your question about those signs. We can look into that. The one thing, when I look at the guidelines where, if you read the guidelines literally and you're not looking at the building in question, I'd say, yeah, it's not really consistent with that. I think one of the problems is you have a building inherently designed for auto use that's converted now to a non-auto use, but still has a canopy up, because it was a gas station. The building itself is set well back from Ojai Avenue, not necessarily the canopy. So I would look at it like, if this were a traditional retail building built out to the sidewalk, then you have a greater inconsistency, because you're trying, the things the guidelines are trying to address are buildings like that, a more conventional retail building.
Things like in the core of the city, yeah.
Right. So when I look at this building and I think, well, why don't I have a wood sign projecting perpendicular? Well, the building's 50 feet from the sidewalk, and you have a canopy that was part of a gas station. So the intent of the guidelines, I think, is really good. You do, you already have a pedestrian oriented downtown, and I think you want to carry that to the east, but where you have a building like this that's being adaptively reused, I can understand the difficulty in following the absolute letter of the guidelines.
And oriented toward pedestrians is a little bit vague in itself. It could be facing the street, it could be facing along the street, and still be thought of, I think, as oriented to pedestrians.
Right.
It may be as oriented as you can get, given the building type you have. That would be something I would say, you know, and of course, the applicant can speak if they want, but it's just, when I look at this, it's difficult to take a building like they have and make it fit neatly within the design guidelines. And I think that's also why the guidelines.
It's certainly a different case than most of the businesses along Ojai Avenue. Yes, ma'am?
One other question, and this may be subject to interpretation or existing precedents. Is there anything, or has anything come up where, for instance, let me step back. In this situation, to me, almost the dominant sign is the logo painted on the front of the building, and then the sign is kind of set back on the other portion of the building. Is there, is that consistent with the sign ordinance, where the logo becomes the dominant feature? Or maybe that's just my visual take, is that it's the dominant feature on --
Yeah, and I think it's also closer to the --
Kind of an interpretation.
It probably jumps out more, because I think it's more distinctive, and it's closer to the sidewalk.
Right, yeah.
But, you know, largely, especially where you get into signage, I think you're looking at what the guidelines cover in terms of colors, materials, and that as much as you can, not so much the message.
Right.
Because that gets a little tricky trying to, you know, this isn't a chain where you've got, you know, the golden arches going up, but, yeah, I too think that the logo is what jumps out at you as distinctive, and --
Right.
But to me, as long as that's within the parameters of the code for allowable area, that that's not my role to regulate their image. But certainly, I think, because we're all familiar with text, and it's setback further, it doesn't jump out at you like a logo does.
Further, commercial speech has more protection than some other kinds, so we need to be a little more careful.
Correct.
I did have just a couple other questions. This is on page three of three in the staff report, where the sign features and the areas are laid out, and I'm curious, because I simply don't understand it, how are sign areas computed? Is it a rectangle enclosing sign B? If that were the case, then that would be more like 35 square feet by itself. And if it's a series of rectangles, which would also make sense, since that sign appears to be in three separate pieces, are we then talking about four signs instead of two? I'm not trying to make it difficult, I'm trying to understand how we come up with these Because right now, it shows the total sign area of sign B is, sign B, the one on the canopy, is being 16 square feet, and I don't know how to get there.
See, it would be a rectangle.
Normally, I would have thought it was a rectangle encompassing whatever the message was.
All of it, right.
But that would be about 35 square feet by itself, so we must have computed this sign area in a different manner.
It would compute it as a triangle.
Maybe so.
Or when it --
I didn't know if there are any rules about this at all.
Well, when it was submitted, usually, isn't there something with the dimensions around what was submitted?
Yeah, it's --
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I'm just thinking of some other projects I've been -- I guess there are numbers on there here. It's just small, it's small. There it is.
Yeah, I think that that's the case, and very often, it's a rectangle or a square, so it's very neat to go around the border.
I think, yeah, I think that --
Okay, so it's this.
It's portrayed as a series of rectangles, or as a stepped pyramid or something. Okay.
Right, and that is a --
I didn't know if there was some standard way of computing signage or not.
You generally try to take the most direct word, like the text lays itself out very easy, it's a rectangle.
Sure, yep.
You know, height and width, but something like this, I think to do a large square where you're pulling a lot of area that's not really devoted to sign is kind of penalizing.
Doesn't seem fair to the applicant, right.
It has to be more of an irregular triangular shape, I think, given the layout.
Okay. Just one more question, I promise. As I looked at this, and I think you mentioned in the staff report, the proposed amended site plan has two fewer parking spaces than the original, but that's still within the requirements, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a better layout, and there was some wasted space before.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Okay, I just, okay, I'm still a little, I'm looking for clarification. So measuring the logo, it is, you did do it with a triangle, you didn't do like three separate little shapes around each element of the, that's what you did?
It's kind of done that way. It looks like it's done that way.
Yeah, I know. I believe the sign contractor did individual squares around each line.
Around each of the squares, yeah.
However, if you did measure it as a triangle.
Okay.
Face times height divided by two.
Yeah.
It ends up being 17.89 square feet instead of 16. So we are still within the allowable sign area.
Yes, yeah. Terrific.
And I just have one other question. So they, on the previously approved site plan, they had some, I'm not sure if there were any plans going in there, but they had something that was maybe screening the chain link fence that's in front of where they park the old trucks. You know, they park, they're parking old trucks behind the chain link fence that you can --
The building.
As you view from Ojai Avenue.
They used to, at least.
I know. But they, I think they still are, because that's what's out there now. But, so they removed the area that you could potentially have some screening for the chain link fence on the proposed. Has, did you, do you know why they did that? Is there any room to put that back in?
If you --
Perhaps a better question for the applicant.
Realigned the parking space between parking spaces six and seven.
Right.
That's the only area where I could see they could potentially put at least a small landscape strip back in.
But there wasn't really discussion about that.
There wasn't really a discussion, because they were increasing the landscape area within the fenced enclosure.
Correct, yes. Okay, thanks.
Okay, then if we are through with questions for staff, I'll open the public hearing, and could we hear from the applicant? Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward, give us your name and address, and tell us, are you the owner? Are you the architect? Are you the landscape architect? Where are we?
I'm sort of the architect of the entire thing, but I'm the tenant and the business owner. Yeah, CJ Stogsdill is still the owner of the building, and I am opening a business there and renting the building from him.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Lottis has a question.
Okay, I guess I have a question. So I do appreciate everything that you're doing with that building and the site, it's looking very nice. And so do you, is there any opportunity to put some screening, some opportunity for maybe some vines along that chain link fence as you look from Ojai Avenue?
Yeah, we've definitely thought about doing a vine. I'm going to be painting that fence white as well, just to give it a little bit of a softer, more neutral look, and to go with the rest of the building. So those are up for consideration, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that is a permanent, does the owner is planning, what's the owner's plan for the use of that space?
Well, you know, all the parking belongs to us, but personally, from a historic standpoint, I think having vehicles occasionally parked back there that represent the era that the building was built in 1951 actually goes along with the historic nature of that whole corner. So for me, it's actually quite interesting to have his vehicles there from time to time. So we may still allow him to park vehicles there, I think, and, you know, we're kind of figuring that out as time goes on. But in the meantime, we also increased the landscape a lot in the back and in the front, so we have so much landscape that we've put in there.
Agreed.
But definitely, I am painting it white shortly, and vines are definitely in the framework, you know, we're talking about it right now.
Okay. So the public has access to that area? I guess I was thinking it was completely fenced off.
There is a gate.
There is a gate, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
Yep. Couple questions. So if the owner's parking cars in the back are used, are going to meet your parking requirements?
Oh, yes.
You still have ample room?
Yeah, our parking requirements are six spaces total, including the one handicap space.
Okay.
And right now, we have seven, including the handicap space.
Okay, so one space.
Plus the two in the back that could be semi-permanent parking for the owner.
Yes, exactly. Totally have, yeah.
Okay. And then I have a question about the sign. Did you consider doing any sort of a wood or a routed sign for either the logo and/or the name of?
Yeah, I did. I actually had a sign company create a wooden sign, and I went through the whole process and the cost, and looked at it all. But to be honest, the building itself is so iconic that I think it's nice to have a painted sign, rather than chopping down another couple of redwood trees. I think it lends itself to a sign, and really, I was standing across the street and just visualizing it, and I noticed how the marquee wasn't being used, and there's this really interesting shape at the top of the marquee.
I saw that.
So I actually created our entire logo based off of the shape of the marquee of the building.
Okay.
In front of the canopy.
Yeah, in front of the canopy. And it's an interesting question as well that you raise in terms of the dominant sign. And to me, actually, the dominant sign, which, the most visible sign, is actually the one over the former garage door. And even though maybe it's not the most, the frontage sign, it's the one that I think is easiest to see when you're walking by, it's definitely the more pedestrian sign. So that was a thought as well.
Oh, is that the one with the, let me make sure I'm understanding? Oh, is that the one with the, let me make sure I'm understanding you correctly?
The light and space.
Yeah, the word.
Oh, off to the right.
Than the symbols.
Yeah. Even though if you look at that plan, the dominant one looks like it's that one in the front, actually, from driving down the street or from walking down the street, as you likely know, the light and space itself, the, the text will be more visible.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have questions for the applicant, yes, go ahead, Chester.
Well, I guess it has to do with allowable square footage of signs, because of, I, I would think that the logo standing by itself, I'm going to be, I'm going to say something unpopular here, I, I, I think it's out of character, I think it's out of character with Ojai in general. Symbol, symbolism like that is, is good, that's maybe your logo, but it feels like it's so prominent, put on that point, out of context, because it doesn't have the name of what you're doing there. So it, it, to me, it's just, it feels more like a, an architectural element than a sign. And personally, I think it would do better if it was associated with your tagline or who you are, so you can associate the logo with that. So that, so that's my personal opinion, seeing that, you know, the light space, I agree that, that's probably more visible where it is, because it's set back as you walk. But I'm just, I'm not in agreement with your opinion that, that, that logo standing by itself is in character.
Well, I can say that I appreciate your creative difference, and, and truly, I mean that. You know, for myself, with our business being called Light and Space, there's almost nothing that would represent light more than a sun and space more than a moon and a star. So for me, actually, the logo is, is very consistent with the name of, of the, of the space itself.
Right, and seeing it together makes more sense to me, and that's usually what happens, is you put a logo with the tagline or the name of the business, so there's an association with it. Right now, it's just standing by itself.
Well, in the case of the golden arches, I've seen a lot of golden arches standing by themselves.
Yeah, well, that's, they've spent a lot of money on branding, for sure. But of course, you'll see the golden arches and you'll see McDonald's right underneath it, but I don't spend much time there, so I can't recall what that is, actually. So that, that's just my, my sense, and I also. Possibly, you can bring that up. And that, the, the idea, and I also think it would look a lot better, now, there's a cost factor, with the raised letters on wood concept, because you can introduce a third color into that. It just being painted on the building too, even though there are signs in town, I went through town this evening, there are names like The Nest and a few others, they're done in script, and, but they're, they're usually names, they're not logos standing by itself. That's why I think it's out of character, because it's not done, I haven't seen it, and number, you know, and for the reason that it's not associating with your logo. So that's my, my personal opinion, I, I don't think it's in character with, with our town.
Bobby?
Well, I kind of have a different opinion about it, I mean, I think that, I would agree with you that it kind of enhances the architecture, and if I noticed that, if I hadn't seen the light and space part, it would pique my curiosity and I would wonder what that is. And I would say, well, it's an interesting looking building, and then I'd go, oh, light and space, okay, and it's got all this glass, it's probably going to be fairly obvious what's in there. I don't necessarily think they have to be tied together, maybe that is an architectural feature, it's not a sign. I, I think that so many of the wood signs that we have on the buildings in downtown Ojai are almost impossible to read, and I think that many of the painted signs are much more graphic and light and simple, and, I mean, I had a business for ten years that had a hand-painted sign on the building, and it was approved, and it was low-key and tasteful, and I, I think it's fine.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I love the new sign at Azu, and I think The Nest sign is perfectly fine as well. Sometimes I find the wood signs very heavy.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Then we'll open the public hearing. I have one card, Mr. Daddy.
Well, I'm sure everybody sitting up here understands that when Mr. George Garvey owned that on the corner, it was a mobile station, there was a big mobile sign there with a great big red flying horse on it. Again, one of the things I thought that this planning commission should do is go through and clean this stuff up. I thought that we had decided that there were alternatives to wood that were allowed, and what we're doing is we're citing A two and A five and all these things, and this needs an update. First of all, I'm in favor of the logo, I think it's fine, I think that building is so massive. It's a gas station, and anything you can do to turn it into something that's today is good, it's a gas station, it's a metal galvanized box is what that thing is. I'm delighted with the landscape, I wished we would adopt that landscape, we have it there, we have it across the street, down the road. I think it's very appropriate for where we're headed in Ojai, so I think they've done a good job. I am against the reduction of any parking places, regardless, we've listened, I've listened to hundreds of people come before council in planning, and they all said they had enough parking. Only the ones that failed had enough parking, so that doesn't ring true. The winery had enough parking too, that's why they didn't, you know, they were able to expand, except they don't have enough parking. So I wouldn't allow that. The other thing that I really wouldn't be for is, and, and this is a compound thing, I didn't listen to single one of you address this, is moving that fence up, I think that fence should be removed. Yeah, I understand it's cool to park trucks there, I had lunch next door, there was a truck there, CJ was my mechanic for twenty years, I understand what was going on, I just think that that whole thing, that, that fence and all that stuff and the gate should be eliminated and have all that parking, because I think it'll be very successful and immediately, there's going to be a need for more parking, immediately, and that's the biggest complaint that we have in this community. I think the sign is appropriate, I think the logo's appropriate, I think the use is appropriate, I'm delighted it's there. The landscaping looks fine, I don't think that the signs are overbearing, and I think what we need to do is, things change, and the only thing I think would be more appropriate there would be the neon sign like we have in the beer joint on the corner of Montgomery. And so, you know, we kind of need to get a grip, and Jax and McDonald's and State Farm and Bank of America, everybody is going to no verbiage. You will not see McDonald's on those golden arches much longer, you will not see Jax or anything else on those, they're all going to icon base, they're going to recognition there, getting away from the greatest generation and going to the millennials and the other people. That hit apps and icons, and that's what they do with their finger, and that's what they look for, so I do support the concept, I don't support the moving of the fence, and I certainly don't support elimination of a single parking space in this town, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish things to speak? Please come forward, give us your name and address, and proceed.
I'm Pat Bailey, I live in Miners Oaks, do I need to tell you my street address or telephone number?
That's fine. You're, you're outside the city.
I am outside the city, but not far. My heart is here. I think it's a wonderful space that Serge has created, along with so many other people, and I'm very proud of him and proud of the city of Ojai, I've lived here two years and so happy to be here, and I'm happy that he's coming here more often, since he also lives in LA and works there too. Teaches there, teaches here. So just hoping that you'll approve what he's put before you, and it's taken a lot of time and effort and, you know, what that is, so thank you very much for your time and your, and for your thoughtfulness, I hear everybody's thinking really well, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak on item two?
Good evening, my name is Amber Margaret Lee, I live at two-two-six-four East Ojai Avenue, right over there by the lumberyard, it's my humble honor to speak before you this evening, on behalf of myself and Serge, Sam, really the whole Light and Space community that we've brought together. In this moment, just want to acknowledge all of the hardworking folks that have been a part of this project, particularly the elders that have been in support of our work at Light and Space, and, yeah, lots of long, hard hours in transforming this beautiful relic of a gas station into what we hope will be a, a really bright and serene offering for the community. Of course, I'm biased and I'm in support of the sign, as well as, I believe I'm in support of the parking spaces, ultimately, I'm most in support of us moving forward and being able to open our doors. We have yogis that are a part of this community from all ages, from all walks of life, that live here in Ojai, that are excited to join us, we have little ones too, that are springing up in our community that are also going to be joining us at Light and Space through different activities and programming. I myself am a part of the healing arts programming at Light and Space, I'm a local massage therapist, been here for four years, and also very excited to share in the way of healing at Light and Space and work alongside other practitioners to, yeah, promote wellness and wholeness in life, so just wanted to say that much, thank you for your time, thank you for your energy, thank you for your hearts and your consideration, acknowledging that we are all coming from the best place, wanting the ultimate good for ourselves and for one another, and, yeah, just honored to be a part of the community, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak on item two? All right, we'll close the public hearing, bring the discussion back to the commission. I think we have perhaps two or three issues here to think about. One is the signage, obviously, one is the parking, one is the landscaping. Are there other changes that we wish to consider in this proposed new layout?
Fence?
And the fence, and the fence, yeah, okay. So, Mr. Powers, your opinions on these things?
I think the sign is fine, but I do understand Commissioner Jaglioz's aesthetic input. It's nothing that I would, you know, stop the project on. Have you explored putting the text underneath the icons in the very front? And I understand that's not the most visible sign when you drive and walk by.
Uh, well, we're, we're talking with the applicant, so this is, the public hearings for the public. Please go ahead.
I did consider that, but in the numerous, you know, probably thirty or forty hours that I spent mocking this up over and over and over again, it just didn't look very good, and it shrunk the letters down tremendously, and it actually kind of threw the whole thing off, and, and the illustration just has this nice fit right there, yeah. Also, would just like to mention that, you know, the fence was part of our original plan that was also passed through the commission, and I understand we're looking at this again, but also that, you know, right now, we're, we're hoping to, you know, just move forward with these new changes, and that, that was something that was already passed, passed through.
The, the relocated chain link fence is previously approved, now, I don't know where relocated, from where to where.
In one from the front corner in the building, back to the, the back corner.
Oh, back to the, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just an inquiry whether you looked at, I know you probably played with the sign and.
I appreciate it, Ray, you know, and, and I understand, you know, in, in the creative process, it's, it's really, it's common, and I find myself asking similar questions of people, and then, but oftentimes, behind the scenes, after doing tons, it, it's a little more involved, and I can tell you, I've spent so much time trying to figure that out.
I, I appreciate iconography and, you know, I lean towards graphic languages anyway.
Yeah.
So I am happy, you know, I'm fine with however you decide to do that.
Okay.
I just had that question.
Sure.
I do have, Mr. Daddy brought up, you know, the, the parking and the, and the old trucks and like that, and I, I hear you when you said, you know, to, to honor the, the legacy of the building, the old, old trucks kind of had some charm and like that. I'm just curious, i- is that, did that occur because of your agreement with the property owner, or you really want old trucks back there? I mean, for me, I'd rather have that more parking for the people that come to use the space versus parking nineteen fifty vehicles back there.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I mean, we could end up using those parking spaces for staff or something like that as well, you know? Otherwise, we'd have staff park outside the parking lot, so at least that would be, that's a plan that will allow for more community parking. But the idea of having those trucks or old vehicles parked there, for me, is actually, is, is a creative decision, is something that I actually really like the historic nature of that, yeah, yeah.
I have a question about the fence, so does your lease agreement have something to specify about the fence?
The lease agreement does not say anything about the fence.
You could take the fence out.
Could we take the fence out?
Yes.
I think she means if it became a condition of approval.
We could take any fence out.
I'm just, I mean, is there a reason why it was left in on your, on your, on your site plan?
The aforementioned reasons, yeah.
Which were?
We really liked the idea of having these beautiful old trucks parked there, and, you know, this is something that we've, you know, discussed before, and numerous conversations, and talked to the owner about it, and also looked at it ourselves, and, you know, it's, it's, it's something that we've all agreed upon and was passed through planning, so we all kind of shook hands on that, you know? Yeah. And again, personally, from a creative standpoint, I, I quite like the fence there, and, and yeah, and this has already been through planning, we've already, all, our whole team, the owner, we've all agreed on this already, yeah.
Well, but we are reviewing the changes to the site plan, so that does, I mean, I think that we, we can discuss it and, and, and think about what, what it means to have it left there, and it's not, and it's not being screened. I mean, I'm, I'm just, I just am exploring the reason for why it's there and.
Yeah.
How difficult it might be to be removed.
I would say at this point, it would be quite difficult for us.
Because?
Is the, is the chain link fence already relocated there?
Yeah, it's already been relocated, yeah.
And it would be difficult to remove because?
It'd be difficult to remove because of conversations we've had with the owner, because of the money and time it would cost to remove it at this point, because of us, you know, sharing with the whole community who by and large has come to us and said, we. "We love that you're keeping some of the trucks here. We love that we get to see these things." And, you know, it's like, it's a feature of the building that while it might be an eyesore to some people, it's been, uh, like a endless flow of people who've actually appreciated that. So for me, you know, based on our agreements with the owner, based on our, you know, just everything that we've come to, to this point, it would be a challenge to remove that fence right now.
So, how many trucks do you think he wants to park back there?
Oh, I don't know. I mean, there's two parking spaces, so.
Oh, not three? I guess there's just two.
No.
Oh, sorry, two.
New plan.
Looks like there might be room for three.
Yeah, there, the city doesn't allow parking within, I think it's fifteen feet of the setback. So because of that, there's only two parking spaces, but potentially there could be.
Would you be opposed to having the gate, uh, be open during the hours of operation?
Yes, I think that, you know, if, if there are vehicles parking back there that are worth a considerable amount of money and what I've found just being in the location for a long time is people constantly stop by and they want to investigate those old cars. So, for me, the idea of having that gate open is just like a, is like an invitation to people who drive by, to passersby, to sort of pollute our parking lot with kind of gawkers and things like that, you know, who want to go in and explore more. Um, so, and I feel like it's just safer, you know, with vehicles like that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and I understand your challenges with it, you know, and, and we are looking at a vine. We are looking at vines. Something that I've spoken to, uh, Mr. Lawrence Nicklin, landscape designer about already.
Chester.
I have a question for staff. This has come up before and, uh, when we have a revision to CUP, how much of what we pre-approved on an existing, on a plan, do we have the authority to, to change on the second round? Because it seems terribly unfair to the applicant that we go ahead, went ahead and approved something and now just because they're asking for a change in another area, we're just going, "Hey, by the way, can you now go do this?"
Open the entire Pandora's box.
Yeah, it, it just doesn't seem right and doesn't seem fair. But I would like to have staff comment on that.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. I know this was recently approved. Typically, unless you're looking at something that's not in compliance or you're trying to get something into compliance that isn't, that's essentially fair game or required when you're asking for a per, a permit or discretionary approval. But really, before you tonight, we should be focusing on the project description of what the changes are that are before you. I think it's fine having the conversation in terms of changes to the project because I think some of these things like screening, they're fair issues, but the purpose of the amendment is what's proposed to be amended, not revisiting the project that was looked at six, seven months ago. So, I mean, that would really be the, and, and I think particularly because it was the same hearing body, so. Um, unless the applicant, I think, is receptive to changes or conditions, the, the focus should really be on the, the matter before you. The signage and the revisions to the site plan.
Although, the, one of the changes is the island that's right in front of the chain link fence.
Correct.
Just to point out, there is a relationship there.
Right, and that's why I said, in terms of screening for that parking, when you remove that island, it obviously, I, I suppose you could put some kind of planters with a vine in it on a fence, but it does make screening that rear parking area more difficult by losing that island. So since that is part of the site plan, yeah, I think that's an open discussion on this.
Is that pervious surface there where you could actually put in plants? I can't tell from the drawing.
I think on the previously proved, it's pervious. It's shown as the, an island separating parking spaces, whereas in the new plan, it's removed. So I think the new plan is just relying on the fencing to screen that area, which is what I think triggered the discussion about, "Could you put some type of screening, a vine, something on the fencing itself to screen those rear spaces?"
Okay.
Well, if chain link screens, that's kind of debatable.
So, the question is, is, is there any sort of a planter or place that a vine could be planted in there? Or is it just all asphalt there?
The, the open, the open ground is still there. That same width of ground roughly is still open there.
I mean, it doesn't show that it's shaded, so I was assuming that it was asphalt.
It's not, it's not lands, it's not designated as landscape area now.
But it could be?
Where the island was.
Actually, that island is still asphalt. Yeah, we, we did not dig it up. And, um, I can speak to that. In terms of a screening, with the types of plants that we're using, those aren't plants that would actually provide much screening. We're, have small, a lot of small barrel cactus and things like that. So even if we had had that island there, I don't think it would have provided a great deal of screening. But for me personally, the, the main reason I removed that island is the idea that at some point, perhaps even in the very near future, we could, we might just remove that fence and actually just have one large parking lot. You know, and to put an island in there, knowing that that could be possible at some point, seems like a, just really a waste of digging up asphalt and, and even if it's not us, let's say we have this business for ten years and then somebody else takes it over from us, it just seems like at some point, most likely, that island would be removed, you know? So we thought, you know, better than, rather than digging up all this asphalt, planting low plants that don't actually provide a screen, right? That we just leave the asphalt where it is. We're also digging up lots of other asphalt and inputting landscaping where it really needed it, like that square section under the awning there, which was hideous. And, and then grow vine over it. And yes, a vine could easily be, be grown over that space. So just so you know, that was the thinking behind it.
Okay, so I, I think I missed, totally misunderstood you. So if, if it is asphalt,
Yeah.
you're gonna punch holes in the asphalt to plant the vines? On that chain link fence that's going to be blocking the historic vehicles that I'm concerned about that may be a storage area?
Yeah, it's, um, it's not a storage area.
But-
But, but, um,
Could be.
In terms of vines, I don't know much about growing vines. My mother or my friend Max from the Turtle Conservancy might know a little bit more about vine growing. I didn't realize you actually have to punch into concrete. I, I assumed that the vines could just be grown from around the sides of the landscaping out. But that said, yes, we could absolutely just punch holes in the concrete to grow vines out of. It'd be much easier than trenching up that whole thing, ripping out like a whole section and, you know, one challenge as well with, uh, doing all the asphalt demolition in the property is because it's so old and it's been patched so many times that it gators when you cut through it. So, what often, there's a ton of patching or it leaves these irregular lines. So it's just, it's actually more problematic and I think it'd be easier just for the parking lot for long term to just, uh, you know, to, to just punch holes, you know, and, and be easier to, to make them uniform and, and for long-term plans.
Yes, I guess the question, I think that we're looking at is, it's a chain link fence. They're gonna be cars parked behind it. Do we want screening there or not? I think that's where we're going with that. All right.
Well, perhaps we could think of another alternative to a vine on an asphalt area that's gonna be very hot and require a lot of water and maybe there could be something even like a sailcloth panel attached to the chain link fence that would just soften that area up a little bit.
I would just like to remind the council that the chain link fence was not up for this meeting and the screening that we would have been putting on would be cactus that grow up to about a foot high. Exactly. There was no screening planned there along that fence.
Um, well, first I want to, uh, thank Chester for asking the question of staff because I was kind of feeling the same thing, like we already approved that and, yeah, maybe we can explore it, but I don't think it's fair to explore it. I also want to, um, you know, as I'm hearing you speak, Sergey, you know, I'm getting really clear that, that the desire to cover the fence so the trucks don't show is kind of the opposite of the intention of having these vintage trucks play off the legacy of the building. And it's all kind of about the character of this old gas station.
I thought what we heard was we don't want people walking to the back and looking at the old vehicles.
We don't want the gate, well, what I heard is we don't want the gate open and people going in there and exploring.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, if people come and walk by and take some photos, that's great. But people actually walking in there, looking at them, investigating them, wanting to buy them, you know, it's, when you have a gate open like that, it invites a whole nother level of, uh, um, inspecting.
I, I'm just wanting to point out what, what I'm hearing about the character of the entire project includes these legacy trucks.
No question. Yes, Bobby.
I guess I have more problem with the chain link fence than I do with the trucks. I mean, the trucks are kind of like an iconic period piece in much the same way that there's air streams behind half the buildings in town now because it's art, you know, I mean. I just would like to soften the fence a little bit, but it's neither here nor there.
Well, if, if the fence is being painted white, right, then it's gonna-
That's the wood fence.
The chain, no, no, the chain link fence will be painted white.
Yes, that's what I heard. So it's gonna blend, it's gonna blend into the building and the whole flow of everything.
It's all chain link fence around the back, around the back of that area, yeah.
Right, but there was, and then wood fence.
There's wood fence around, but directly behind the building.
I thought you were painting the wood fence. I misunderstood.
No, no, the chain link. It's, it's my intention as well to soften the fence, you know? And also white, I mean, there's chain link around that whole back area, so it also isn't inconsistent with the rest of the, the property there and, you know, we can only do so much at a time. You know, we're really doing our best here.
And it is in the back.
Yeah.
So you'll paint the entire, you'll paint the entire, all of the chain link fence white?
I would be open to painting, and I'm not saying that like as I would be open to it. I would like to paint the entire chain link fence white. I would love to do a lot with the fence, uh, next to the restaurant on the west facing side of that parking lot and Max and I have talked about that a little bit and come up with ideas. And, um, as you can imagine, you know, right now, I'm working seven days a week, nineteen hours a day, you know, just to get it all done. But definitely, I, I would like to paint all that white. Absolutely. I'm, I'm with you, Catherine.
I just wanted to add one thing on the, the whole screening with cars and this discussion. So the two spaces in back, we're spending a lot of time talking about screening. I just want to say, on the previous approval, you've got the six spaces in front that are closer to the street. None of those are screened either. Now, I realize they don't have the vintage cars there, but they're gonna have cars there most of the time because if your business is successful, people will be parked there. Those spaces are closer to the street. The two and back are about sixty-five, seventy feet back from the street, so. Just in terms of the discussion, there's a lot of effort being spent screening two spaces furthest away. Whereas there's six spaces closer to the street that aren't screened at all either because I think your landscaping was pretty much all low-growing succulents, very drought tolerant.
Exactly.
So really, none of those are gonna screen a car.
No.
So, anyhow, just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay. Uh, my, my purpose here was to make sure that each commissioner had an opportunity to express an opinion on the project. Any other comments? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, I have, I-
Or if we could do-
I have some comments. Because I, I thought, I was focusing the comment on the, on the chain link fence, but I do-
I do have a comment on the, or some thoughts on the logo. You know, I guess, I, I am concerned about the logo, um, because, um, where are the figures?
Attachment E, page two.
So, so when, if the logo is actually measured, um, properly, you know, it's more like almost eighteen square feet and it's, it's dominating the, um, the word, the sign, I mean, the, the part of the sign that gives the name of the place. And I, I'm just concerned about precedent and, um, the, 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 um, the dominance of a logo in a sign. And I, 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 you know, I'm not completely opposed to it. I just think that size-wise, it's big. It's really big. And, um, I would be, I would be, uh, you know, I think reducing the size of the logo would be some, I'd be interested in, uh, conditioning the project on that or perhaps putting the logo, um, on the building, not on the, not on the very top there, but above the door entrance. So, um, I, I just would like to bring that up. I don't know if the com, other commissioners feel this, feel similarly, but, I, I am concerned about the size of the logo.
Okay.
I'd like to address that. I actually think that it would be more dominant on the building just because when you're walking, you're probably not even gonna notice it where it is right now. It's more when you're driving by it that you'll see that.
Above your head, yeah.
Yeah, because, and that thing is massive, that overhang, so I think it might actually look worse if it were smaller. But I don't, I don't think from walking as a pedestrian, it's going to actually be an overwhelmingly large thing. It sort of floats there a little bit. And it's gonna be above your head.
Yeah, I, I just think, uh, you know, I, I think it's important to think about the direction we're going in with signs and I don't, I don't really necessarily agree that we're all, that going to the icons is what we want to do and, and, uh, having that be so, such a dominant part of what's on the building there. Anyway, just putting that out there. I, I would be amenable to putting a condition into somehow reducing the square footage of the logo relative to the, the part of the sign that has words.
I wouldn't be amenable to that. I don't want to condition it at all. I'm, I'm pretty clear hearing Sarah J that he explored a lot on his computer what would work for him. I've done that a lot, you know, with graphics paste up and, um, so I, you know, given the amount of time, work and expenditure, um, you know, I'm happy to grant him having the sign the way he wants it to be.
Okay, um, we could, we could, I guess, take separate votes on various aspects of this, but it might be most efficient to see if there are the votes here on the commission to approve the design as it's proposed. And if not, and if not, as-
The two things separately or the two items?
Separate or the whole thing?
Well, we're talking about the si, we're talking about the, the logo, we're talking about the fence, we're talking about the landscaping. But I, that's what I'm saying, is let's start with the whole thing and if there are sufficient votes to pass it as proposed, then we don't need to worry about taking votes on pieces of it. So, does someone wish to make a motion to that effect? Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve signed permit S nineteen dash zero zero five and revisions to design review permit DRP eighteen dash zero zero six and conditional use permit CUP eighteen dash zero zero four for yoga studio and retail office space located at nine fifteen East Ojai Avenue. Assessor's parcel number zero two three zero one five zero four zero five.
There a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. And, and I would urge individual commissioners, if you feel strongly enough about one aspect of this, then vote no. And if we don't have the votes to pass it as it, as the motion stands, then we'll go back and address the separate pieces. Is there any more discussion on that, on the motion?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to say something about it. That puts me in a, in a kind of a quandary because I'm very much in support of the project.
Yep.
And I don't want to say no and then be like the guy that's not supportive of the project. Uh, I'm, I'm fine with the site plan changes.
Do you support the motion as posed or not? Not the project?
Well, that's, that's, that's what puts me in conflict because you're grouping in two things. I, I don't support the motion because I think they should be separate motions. I think the sign should be a separate motion, personally, this is what I think. Uh, and the site plan improvements in another. Uh, because they're, they're kind of different. And one's an already existing CUP and it's a change to a CUP, one's a sign permit. It's, they're, they're different items, so.
Not disagreeing with what you-
So I want to say, if I'm forced to say no, it's not because I don't approve of the project. It is because, it would be because I want- I want to do something different with the sign.
With one aspect of the project.
Yes, with one aspect of it. And I'm not saying no to the sign, I just have some recommendations that I would like to include in that. So that's my, that's my position. I just want everyone to know what that is, so that way, when they hear me vote, they know what, where I'm coming from. But I don't think it's, I do, I don't, I'm not gonna approve the motion because it's all conglomerated into one, and that's my biggest disagreement with the motion. Okay? It should be two.
Okay. We might even do a little more conglomeration. We have discussed painting all the chain link fences white, and that's not part of the current proposal.
That's a condition that we can put on it.
And that would require doing that now, I think, as an amendment to this motion.
Okay.
Because if we pass the motion as it stands, then we're done, I think, right?
Mm-hmm.
So do you want to, you want to amend the motion by adding a condition?
I will make a motion to amend the original motion to require that the chain link be painted white. And since the, I would, well, okay, and to to reduce the sign, to reduce the icon by, I mean, yeah, let me see here. Since it's part of the motion. Well, unless we wanna sep-, I think it would be better to separate the motions. I really do.
Maybe a couple of amendments.
So I'll-
I'm not gonna accept that.
Yes.
Okay.
She just said, she just said that she doesn't accept.
We have a motion and a second motion, a seconded motion, so we should just vote.
The amendment, the original motion maker has not accepted the amendment of painting the chain link fence.
And-
Oh, and-
Chain link fence, I don't have a problem with adjusting the sign. I do have a problem with-
Okay. Would you like to make a narrow amendment, then, just about the chain link fence?
Well, except the motion that we're talking about includes everything.
But frankly, let's, I'd like to keep the motion the way it is, because I can envision the white paint chipping off the chain link fence, which could be much more unpleasant. So I'd like to keep the motion the way it is. Should do a vote?
Okay, we need a second to the amendment, to the amendment, not the original motion.
No, I said, I'd be happy to get rid of the whole amendment.
They're both amendments. Bobby just said she wasn't gonna accept either amendment.
But I think amendments have to be voted on.
No.
No? Is that not correct?
She didn't accept it.
So we should, we need to vote on hers, and then if you don't like it, then we make another motion, and then-
Okay.
I believe that's the-
Okay, if we- We're back to the original motion, which is the proposal that stands on the current paperwork. If we do not have four votes for that, then we go back to fix it. All right? Well, let's have a, let's have a, yes.
Yeah, he seconded it.
Yeah, he seconded.
Ray seconded the original motion. So let's have a roll call, Sherry.
Powers?
Yes.
Jagiello?
I'm gonna say yes, just because I support the project and I don't wanna say anything else.
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
No.
Quilice?
Yes.
Lottis?
No.
Motion passes.
Order two. All right, so we have disposed of that, and item-
Thank you, everyone. I'll pay it. I already have the spray paint.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to we're still in session. Perhaps you'd like to take the conversations to the lobby. We'll move on to item four, director decisions. Is there anything that staff would like to bring up on this? I have a couple of questions.
Staff would be happy to field the questions, then.
Any other questions for staff on the director decisions?
Yeah, that's where I thought we were.
No questions? Okay, I have a couple, just one, one on the form. Again, I compliment you on separating out the director decisions by topic. That makes it a lot easier to review, I think. I'm presuming we use the column labeled applicant, and you have a name and a slash and another name. You're talking about the owner slash arborist, is that correct?
Yes, under tree permits, the first name is the owner, and the second name would be the arborist who prepared the report.
Okay, and under sign permits, then there's the business name slash the owner, or the applicant, or the architect, or?
Right, it's the owner and the applicant.
Well, Ojai Pottery and Clay School, for example, that's a business name.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And under temporary use permits, you've got a person's name and then a business, so I just left confused with the, with the format of what you had done there.
Right, under temporary use permit, it just, it looked, it's the same information, I think they're just reversed, is that the business name didn't come first.
And an address assignment for a vacant lot, I find that very interesting. These are not, these lots are not pre-assigned addresses when when the parcels are put there, I guess. Is that right?
Sometimes that happens, yes.
I did notice my home was originally five ninety West Eucalyptus, and sometime in the nineteen fifties, it was changed to five sixteen. I'm not sure by what process. The house never moved, the lot never moved, but the address changed. Yes, Ray?
And forgive me if I'm out of place, because I've never questioned the director's decisions. I'm seeing, I'm seeing that the movie Women in the Wild was denied, that the temporary use permits were denied. Am I allowed to ask why?
You certainly are. It wasn't because of the movie. I couldn't tell you what it was about, but it was because of deficient parking. We had an event that had a lot more people than the parking was provided for.
I got it.
It was also something, we didn't have a lot of time to respond to that, to try to work out off-site parking.
Got it.
So, yeah, that was the issue in that case.
And then on the seven fifteen Del Oro Drive, is that new land, the land conservancy's purchased? Just- Oh, they're selling it. Got it.
Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you. Okay, just curiosities. Thank you.
What is Ojai Roti? Oh, that's the former Need Bakery.
Actually, it's the former Need Baking Company.
Oh, okay. Sorry, sorry for the slip there.
It's all right. We've been doing it for ten years.
Okay, we'll move on to-
I also really appreciate the way the staff is putting that in columns, and it's so easy to read now.
Yeah, yeah.
It's fantastic.
Okay, on to item five, tentative agenda.
A question on this one. Does, our meetings are always the first and second and third Wednesday of every month, right?
Right.
No changes in that. Okay, just wanted to confirm that. Trying to plan my vacations this year, and I know if I'm absent, I get my my butt chewed out by the city council, so.
That doesn't fall into the plan anywhere, yeah.
Right, gotcha.
And, yeah, okay. Any other questions for staff on the tentative agenda? I appreciate you putting down identified topics for the May fourteenth joint meeting with the city council. We will have to talk about that next meeting.
And there may be one additional item on the April three, which would be an extension of a DRP that had expired the end of last year, which you have the ability, in your discretion, to reinstate. So this was just recently called to our attention, that the DRP had expired. So that could be coming forward to you.
And what's the location of that DRP?
It is the cottages and the flowers project, which I know involved multiple approvals, many of which are final. The DRP, I believe, you did an extension in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. And since they can't be good for more than twelve months, the one in October twenty seventeen should have been extended yet again. So that may likely be coming back on April three.
Okay. That's one I can't discuss. I live too close. No, I, the cottages property actually is still within five hundred feet of my, of a corner of my property. Okay. Any other questions there? Then we are down to reports. Are there any that come forward today? Yes, February twenty-sixth city council meeting. Bobby?
You're on the report from the city council. We're here.
Yes, I know.
We're into item six.
All right.
We have two reports.
There were a number of issues from that meeting that then were brought up at the next meeting that I did attend. I did not attend this one, I watched.
Some part of it, but not the whole thing. And so the only items that I can tell you about were the award of the Hope Fraser Award to Nigel from The Vine, that the musicfestival.org will continue to manage the Libby Bowl.
For this year at least.
For this year at least, exactly. I did note that the sanitary district has waived the connection fee for existing, for ADUs in existing construction. The compliance program is extended for two years. And then there was a lot of conversation about historic properties, and I think that came up again at the following meeting as well, about noticing work permits that were done by, or minor repairs and permits that were director's decisions. And there was a very lengthy conversation about that. And I'd like some further input, if I might get it, from Councilman Wirick about that whole conversation and its intent. I know it's to help foster historical preservation and to give some tools to the historic-
At the discretion of the chair.
Commission.
Please come forward.
Sure. The intent and what we did? Okay. As you might have heard, it's a long history of what were perceived as, I guess, the deficiencies are just something not covered in terms of, once a property was landmarked, and how it was, repairs were handled, to make sure that the character-defining elements are protected under the repair and maintenance procedures. That was one of the motivations for some time. There also were ambiguities in the existing ordinance with respect to things like sites of merit and so on and so forth. And what we tried to do is to tighten up definitions and distinguish between major and minor repair and maintenance permits, so that we protected character-defining elements without putting too much of a burden on the property owner. Also made sure we very much defined and brought up into preeminence the importance of having these character-defining elements in the landmark agreement. So we have a level of, one, one level is handled by the community development director in terms of looking at the character-defining elements, and then beyond that, there's another level that involves the historic preservation commission. So that's a sort of a summary of where history had taught us, I guess is a fair way of saying it, that we had situations where character-defining elements were not protected under repair and maintenance procedures on landmarks. And at least it was perceived that as being a problem. And so it was an attempt to address that issue, among other things. And then, of course, we had the other issue on voting for districts and that kind of thing.
That was, I was unclear to me what the voting was on.
The voting was, when you, this came up again from history, when we were doing our very first district, or our Teramina, the issue is how do you count votes? Do you count owners, or do you count parcels? One vote per parcel, or owners of a parcel?
But what are you voting on?
Whether or not to have an historic district, which requires the fifty percent of the owners to agree, or the, whatever the voting rule is, to agree. And there was a big dispute with that historic district in terms of the different types of voting rules, because there were a number of parcels owned by one entity, and then you also had a number of owners on smaller parcels. And so it, it came into that, so we crafted a compromise, basically, that, that had to do with more of a hybrid approach, that you have, you have one vote per entity, one vote per parcel, up to a maximum of one vote per entity. So in other words, if, if Mr. Connelly can correct me if I'm wrong, if there's, let's say, ten parcels, and five are owned by one entity, and the other five are one person, are one person per parcel, or maybe even some might have two or three owners in those parcels, the five gets one vote. If it's one entity that controls those five, and each of the other entities, even if it has more than one owner, they also just have one vote. Is that basically it? Yeah. So that was an attempt to balance the concern of fairness in terms of ownership interest versus the idea that someone could defeat or bias, I guess is a better word, bias in a historic district effort, one way or another, by simply having the wherewithal to buy up a bunch of properties, and therefore multiply your votes. So there was, but on the other hand, there was a concern about you can multiply your votes by just delegating ownership interest to a bunch of people on one parcel. So it was an attempt of trying to come up with a fairness and more or less, you know, unbiased approach, and so that was what the council came up with, was that sort of a hybrid notion that I voted for. I thought it was a good idea.
So it's still not one vote per parcel?
It's up to, a maximum of one vote, no, it's not one vote per parcel if one entity owns multiple parcels. But on the other hand, it's also not more than one vote per parcel if there's more owners per parcel.
Right, I think it's essentially no one gets more than one vote.
Right.
It's like if, if your name is shown, because some, as you said, there's some properties, you could have four or five owners on title.
Right.
So say, they own two or three parcels, they would get multiple votes, and it'd be spread out, say, among a family.
Yeah, exactly.
So in this case, if that name appears either way, as an owner of a parcel, or multiple owners per parcel, you only get one and no more than one, regardless.
Maximum of one, one vote per parcel, up to a maximum of one vote per entity. That was our, does that, Commissioner Corbin, did that answer your question? Okay. And we added a couple of other things as well. There was no demolition by neglect provision in our current ordinance, at the old, now, now we've made that change, so we, we included that. There also was how we specify how we handle the review and the circulation of historic resources surveys. And there also was an issue of whether or not we should call out, stipulate tools available to promote historic preservation, as opposed to just saying it's whatever, you know, council approves. There was a actual, we attempted to look at, and in fact, got input from the State Office of Historic Preservation- office of historic preservation in terms of sort of best practices to put into these types of ordinances. So.
I apologize for not watching the whole thing, but I'm trying not to watch TV when my granddaughter's around and she's around a lot, so.
Most of those meetings will just put her to sleep, though.
I like watching it, actually.
Put your granddaughter to sleep, for sure.
Am I able to ask, um, Councilman Wirick a question about what he just said?
He'll.
Would you like to move on?
He'll be back as, as the city council liaison. Let's do it then. Uh, Commissioner Lottis, would you like to report on the March 12th city council meeting?
Okay, so, um, yeah, there was more historic preservation discussion that was about the voting per parcel at that meeting. And thank you for explaining all that because I didn't, I did not have a good handle on that. Um, so on the regular agenda, um, there was a memorandum of, of understanding with the Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce about using Libby Park when it's not in conflict with other regular events. And they have a one year term to try, try out, um, some events in that park to make, uh, better use of what's, what we have there. Um, then there was the discussion on the planning commission and the Parks and Rec Commission, uh, pers, uh, well, uh, composition. And, um.
Size and composition.
Yes. And, um, yes, right. So for the planning commission, let's see. Uh, they did vote to reduce it to five members and, um, starting with the first planning commission vacancy, um, that will allow the, us to go to five people. Uh, they've, they are keeping the four-year term. Uh, once they have a vacancy to appoint, the first seat is to be appointed by the mayor and then they go, uh, the appointments are by the various council members, um, in their districts.
Nominations.
Correct. Thank you. Nominations with the, with the, um, entire council to be making the decision, the final decision. Um, the plan, the staff, the Parks and Rec Commission was a matter of appointing or deciding to allow the high school member, um, and specifics regarding their appointment. Um, let's see. Those are the main items. Um, there was discussion about, uh, driving, the driving speed throughout town and whether to go to a 20 mile per hour overall. Um, that, that has some re, uh, consequences for federal funding. And I guess there are some very limit, there are a limited number of street sections that could possibly have the, uh, speed reduced. And so let's see. Um, the, the council did decide to go to a 25 mile per hour speed where not, where that is not jeopardized by federal funding. And I think that means, oh gosh, uh, Councilmember Wirick, you might have to clarify this as well. Um, I, I, oh gosh.
Federal or state funding, I think only applies to the two.
Well, Grand, uh, well, it also applies to the collector's streets of Grand and, um, Foothill. And, um, but anyway, uh, so there was some discussion about that. And, um, there will be, and a follow-up item for that, uh, then is to put a stop sign at Signal and Summer. There was a lot of discussion about that, but in the end, the motion was for the stop sign to be installed was approved and to at least try it out. Um, there were, was a discussion on small wireless facilities. I guess there are some FCC regulations that have changed and diminished the city's ability to review and regulate, um, uh, the 5G network kind of equipment that, so, um, so there is some concern about that, but, uh, the city, um, there, oh, the, yeah, there, there's review limits on the review of aesthetics. And, um, uh, so council, there, the council direction was to come back, for staff to come back with some options and to be as restrictive as possible on what the city's review authority, uh, can, uh, pertain to. And I think, um, there's some, maybe Councilman Wirick could explain again, that Carnegie Mellon was back in town, I guess, and I wasn't aware of that. So I think that's, uh, so $430,000 was approved, was has, is available or been approved for a SCAG demonstration project on Maricopa Highway. It has to do with the ATP grant. So that should be great. And, um, I think that's about it.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, and all, all the other minutes, or meetings that we have to report on will be at subsequent, uh, planning commission meetings.
Chair.
So we have.
Chair, I did receive an email that there will be a meeting April 15th, the MAC meeting.
March 18th?
April 15th.
No, I understand, April 15th. You did say April 15th, but what about March 18th? You're right.
There is one or there isn't?
There will be one.
Yes.
When I receive an agenda, I'll forward it to Commissioner Corbin.
So April, that would be report at April 23 then. Okay? And for our grand finale, uh, return to the lectern, our city council liaison.
Here we go again, yes. Um, just to flesh out from the, from the backwards, frontwards, the, it, what's fascinating about the issue of traffic speed limits is that the current, um, state law kind of embeds a car-centric mentality into setting speed limits where you're limited to 85% of observed speeds in terms of where you can set. And that's a, is a little more complicated than that in, uh, in terms of the speed. So there actually is a task force that is being, was, uh, the last legislative session directed that a task force be appointed statewide to look at this issue in terms of changing state law to make it easier for cities to reduce speeds because of a number of things, among which is the, uh, California seeing what we're seeing nationwide, and that's the spike up in pedestrian deaths. You know, and there are a lot of debate about whether it's traffic calming or whether it's people, you know, looking at their cell phones when they cross the street. Um, but it's probably a combination of all of the above. Um, but it does highlight the importance of our complete streets effort because to the extent that we can engage in traffic calming and then do observations and that traffic calming has the effect of reducing that 85th percentile, then we're okay in terms of trying to get our speeds down. And I think there's a general feeling in the community that at least in certain selected areas, we'd like to get our speeds down. So the motion was, uh, for the 25 miles per hour was to go towards 25 miles per hour whenever that doesn't jeopardize funding. And it's not just the state highway, it's also the feeder streets that we get some supplemental funding.
Signal and Kenyatta and Gridley and.
Right.
Montgomery, okay.
Right. So it's all kind of mixed in. And so we after had that discussion, then the stop sign discussion came up. Well, that calms traffic. Which was motivated my vote to say yes, let's try it because it does reduce. It, 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 that is a form of traffic calming. All right? So it just points up the need for design as opposed to observational statistics. And it's a kind of a tension. Do you try to look at how you do, how you handle things like comp, traffic calming and, and speeds from the standpoint of what's the right design for our community and what fits versus, well, you've got to have statistics and you've got to have a, a burden of proof being on having those observational statistics before you make the change. And if you think about it, that was the basis of, that was the gist of the debate in council between those two different points of view. So it's a, it's an interesting debate, but I think it, we're definitely moving in the direction of traffic calming by design, I think incrementally, is my opinion.
Yeah. I've, I've talked to Mr. Grant about this and he, he related that there is this document called the Uniform Manual on Traffic Control Devices.
Right.
UMTCD. That specifies certain criteria whereby state law, you have to put in stop signs or stop lights or something. And, and absent a sufficient number of accidents or deaths or whatever, it's not required by state law that you do it. But city council can specify that anytime they please.
Right. And so anyway, it's going to be interesting what comes out of this task force that I think is supposed to be in place. The, the report's to be back by July of 19, uh, for a possible change or some, some adjustments in state law regarding to what degrees local authorities are preempted in terms of engaging in, um, speed limit management. So it's an interesting question. And, you know, the argument always is if you, if it's too slow, you promote road rage and that can be more dangerous as opposed to, um, you know, the traffic calming effect. So we'll see. I mean, that's part of what the flashing beacons are about, I think, and, uh, that we're moving towards on the state highway. That's a form of traffic calming. And, uh, and yes, we got a demonstration grant to the surprise of all of us. We got a demonstration grant for, um, marking out this, um, traffic calming, especially on 33. And we can live with it for a while and. See how it works before we put it in, in concrete. And so I think that was a great, a great move.
Yeah, that's a commercial best practice. Build a little, test a little.
Right. And I, I like the idea. I think they're looking at us and, okay, you want to be guinea pigs? Uh, we'll give you some money to be guinea pig. And yeah, we'll accept it. We love it. We like trying new things. Uh, I want to just give us a shout out to, uh, to Ojai. Have you, did you notice when the wildlife corridor passed, where did they get their, their night sky language? Us.
Yep.
City of Ojai municipal code, what you guys did or whatever, what we've all done. So they basically just took that template for the night sky and said, yeah, let's plug that into the wildlife ordinance for the whole county. And that's what happened. So.
I had a quick comment, too. We do have a complete streets policy.
Yes.
So.
We do.
I'm just saying.
And how does that interact with the observational data requirements?
The city's adopted that and it's all spelled out.
I know. So it's all very interesting.
It is. And, and we also have the master plan.
Yes.
Both of which have been adopted by the city council.
So I, that's why, that was the basis of my saying that's the direction we're moving in. Yes.
Um, one of probably the most interesting, um, speakers at the planning commissioners' conference was a guy who started a better block, it's called. And that was one of their things where they, they just go out and mock up what they think's going to work on the street. And it, it makes a huge difference. So people can really see it and understand it and see how it feels.
I, I think it's a wonderful idea because sometimes it's just changing the radius of a curvature.
Right. You can test it.
Uh, that makes it a lot easier to handle than, you know, and, and rather than, you know, before it's formed up and out the contract. So I think it's a wonderful idea. Absolutely. Okay, real quick, um, I just want to, I've said this before, I'm going to say it again. And it has to do with, with the item number three today. I, I want to see when a source document is referenced in a, in a plant, in a, in a staff report, it ought to be provided to the planning commission and you guys ought to insist on it. That's my opinion. This is how I feel. Okay? Um, so you had source documents referenced in this item number three that you had, were not provided to the entire commission. And that's also part of, to the public. So the public has, also has, okay, this document's been referenced in a staff report. It should be there in the packet and posted for the public to see. That's my personal opinion and I, I'm asking, you know, that, that I, I certainly, I hope you ask for that and insist on it. That's my personal opinion.
That'll go a long way with clarifying, you know, the fairness of it all, too.
Yes.
I mean, we had a meeting on it. We had a lot of discussion on it. And for that not to be there was a little a disservice to the, the applicant, for sure. Uh, because, you know, we, you would, you would have had a probably a different view if you would have read all the discussions that we had on the initial approval.
Yeah. So just a comment, you know, um, on the, uh, where we actually are taking incremental steps toward making sure you have plenty of work to do, namely, general plan update. Uh, it's, you know, we're going to be getting proposals soon and we're looking at, at alternative methods. For example, I brought up the idea, and I've spoke to some of my colleagues, the, um, CMU group has, um, put together a, a possible alliance with UCSB and the University of Massachusetts. And a couple of us have floated the idea of, well, maybe we need to look at utilizing these resources as part of this whole effort that CMU is bringing to the table for also looking at how we update our master plan. My thought, for example, being the oldest part of our master plan, most out of date is the master environmental assessment, the MEA. Well, rather than having, you know, your standard consultant come in and do this, why not have this be looked at in terms of, um, maybe from an innovative approach, um, by a university, uh, group that might be interested in doing that kind of thing. Um, especially a university group like the UCSB Burn School that already has familiarity with the Ojai Valley. They've done a series of studies of this valley in the past of an environmental sustainability nature. So I'm just saying we're hoping to really, I think, uh, accelerate in the next fiscal year, uh, the move towards the general plan update, which is going to be hours and hours of fun for everyone in concern.
Your tongue.
What? And then, and then last, um, I want to really call out Ray. Um, we had coffee the other day and he reminded me of something that Art Ludwig had brought up in terms of alternative building methods executed by ordinance in the county of Marin. And I got that and we are looking at how we can harness that focus on, um, doing more than just talking about alternative building methods, but actually finding a way to incorporate that in our municipal code and allowing it, um, that wider spectrum of possibilities for, uh, Chester to think inventively about. So anyway, that's it.
Okay.
Any other questions or?
I have, I just want to clarify a few things about the planning commission.
Yes.
Cause you guys had a lot of discussion about it.
Yes, we did.
And we, and we really have not gotten a memo or anything. And originally.
Well, the ordinance hasn't been passed yet.
It hasn't been. It's still in discussion.
Well, we, we gave direction for it to be drafted, so.
Oh, so you still have two readings and then 30 days.
There was a lot of emphasis placed on absentee, okay?
Yes.
Abstances. And I got to say that the, when I first came on the commission, then no one emphasized that I had a limit to what I could do. So.
Okay.
And some of the, uh, times I was not here is because I was over, there was one item on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And the item I had was going to be recused from because I was working on it. So I saw no purpose in being here. So there are reasons that are legitimate to not be here.
Right.
For a particular meeting that have to, that should be considered in that calculation, right?
Don't disagree with that. It's just a matter of having some clarity about it.
Right. And I don't think there was ever that kind of clarity.
No, it wasn't.
So I, you know, I would say, I would make that decision myself, not thinking I would have to actually explain it to anyone. And, uh, and then, and yet, when you look at the sheet and you see, uh, absences, you just assume that somebody's not doing their job or not paying attention. So I just think it's more.
You had the biggest number.
Yeah. And I was like, I had the biggest number because two of those meetings I recused myself and I, and that was the item on the agenda. So I didn't, I, I was not going to sit in the other room. I stayed home and watched it on TV. So I just wanted to clarify that. But so, so is it the, is it four a year? Is that what it is? I want to know that. Cause I'm planning my vacations this year as well.
I think that's the current number. Uh, and then there's the issue of excused versus unexcused and so on and so forth. And I, I think the council understood we needed to tighten up. And, uh, you know, we took no action on that item. We, we talked about the need to get more clarity on it.
Right.
And have it more, better communicated exactly what the expectation is.
Yes, I would really, I would really appreciate, yeah.
Open to suggestions.
Knowing what that is because we all need to plan accordingly. You know, we have vacations, we have other things that we're going to do.
Exactly what you're talking about.
I just want to know what the rules are. So I could comply with the rules.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So I, so for now, there is, i- is there a standing, I want to know, is there a standing amount of days that we are?
Well, we haven't changed the commi, we have not changed the commissioner protocol.
Which is?
I think it's four.
It's, it's four in a year, then, then the council can consider.
Right. Well, actually, everybody says it will anyway, but it's, it's, yeah, it's a, it's a guideline.
But it's not.
Right now, it's a guideline.
It's not an automatic rule.
Uh, which draws the attention in, in its, in, it's in a report and it's a guideline that's presented to council as a possible criteria for consideration of removal.
Okay. So, so when, to. Okay, so, so when, to not be on that list, so how can I not be on that list again? Because it was like uncomfortable, people going, hey, look, this is a yellow here, topping the list, you know, and I'm not like, that's not fair, you know, they don't have all the particulars, you know, on that. So, so I just don't want to, I want to avoid that this year.
And I, and I'm not aware of, I mean, that's something we do need to address, is clarity and the protocol, tighten up that protocol and communicate that protocol better, yes.
And when we do take off, I mean, I just notify Sherry, am I supposed to notify the chair, am I supposed to get permission from someone? Those are the kinds of, you know, how to...
Excused, excused and unexcused absences continue to be undefined.
Perfect example of what needs to be better defined.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, well, I just wanted to say that, because that was a little frustrating, you know, to not have that clarified.
That was understood by the council why we took no actual action, all right? And we tried to separate the issue of the restructuring from any particular attendance record.
And I'd like to just add that when you do discuss that, there should be an excuse next to the absent number, you know, and not just a number, because the number, like for instance, Commissioner Quilisi, you know, he had the situation, his medical situation, and that is...
Well, my, my personal feeling, if you asked me personally as one council person, yes, you should communicate to the chair as well as with Sherry. That's my personal opinion.
I usually connect both of them on an email when I'm not coming, so...
That's just my personal opinion.
Right.
Anything else that I could, yes?
Referencing Teramine in the historical district.
Yes.
They have empty lots there.
Yes.
If anyone wanted to build there, it would have to comply with the conditions of the historical...
Of the historical district.
Yeah, I mean, I think Mr. Conley can help me out here, but my understanding is that the review, the building permit review would have to demonstrate character-defining elements or elements consistent with the character-defining, character-defining elements as stated in the document, setting up the historic district, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but that would include particularly things like the, I believe, the Normandy roof style and...
Color of paint.
And paint, I think there's also some issue with windows or some, but I would, I think that that would be part of the evaluation.
So, and that's just not the new lots, that's with any remodel in the Teramine.
Yeah, new construction and remodel.
So, doesn't that go counter to our intention to build affordable housing? Because if you have to build a Normandy roof...
Maybe it just doesn't go in that zone.
Well, there's aesthetic importances, too, you know, it's some...
Just to comment.
No, but I just think if your, if your overriding goal is affordable housing only and you're not balancing anything else, maybe, but, I mean, planning, you're all commissioners, you're balancing policies all the time, and, I mean, I think those are both high priorities for Ojai, affordable housing and historic preservation. They both seem to be very high on the list, there doesn't, they don't have to negate each other, but it's kind of the same question that comes up on green building, is if you have a question about, well, are we going to have high level, you know, do you have to do the utmost in terms of green building and affordability? Isn't going to one, going to cancel the other out? It may, but they're both valid goals, so, anyway, when you're, when you're in a historic district, though, all the properties within that boundary are subject to the district's design and review criteria.
And in fact, that was one of the things that prompted the move on the part of the residents to go to an historic district, was they were fearful that there was going to be sort of manufactured modular out-of-character construction soon to happen in some of those empty lots. I think that's a true statement.
There's a whole batch of them right in the center there.
Yeah, so, you know, I, it was like with, with the five, five G issue, the rule is, as I understood it from the city attorney, is we can have, we cannot single out the five G installations for particular restrictions like height, but if we have a general height restriction, to some extent, we can. So, you know...
A non-discriminatory requirement.
Right.
But can we, can we restrict five G based on the health and safety of the community?
If you want to try to convince the US Congress otherwise, go for it. The US Congress has specified that as long as the radiation limits are within what they have determined to be the health thresholds, that local officials have no discretion beyond what is set by the federal government for those, those health thresholds. We do have, we are completely preempted from having any health, all we can do is to certify the radiation is no higher than what is defined as a threshold by the federal government. That's the limit of what we can do on health issues.
So, it's, I know the city attorney was given that, I provided Suzie with an article about the community that isn't allowing the five G, and he wasn't aware of it and was going to look into that.
Yeah, he was.
I'm tracking this whole thing, because back in the nineties, a very good friend of mine's an engineer, and there was a group of engineers that sent a, sent a petition to the FCC back in the nineties, asking them not to allow five G, because they were concerned back in the nineties about it.
I'm...
Yeah, no, I hear you. I, I hear you what the law is saying.
Parameters as set by the federal government.
Yes.
And what we can and cannot do, and the direction of council was to maintain as much discretion as we can.
Yes.
And look at what, and if we need to, by urgency ordinance, you know, maybe tighten up some of these overall rules, but that's, in fact, it's on the agenda for, I just got my packet.
So, the FCC doesn't distinguish between whether it's rural or suburban or urban or size of community?
No.
Because the reason that, you know, they're, they're rolling it out so they can service, service more units, you know, at four G, they can service about ten thousand per kilometer.
Right.
And at five G, they can service about a million, they can service a million units, because they're gearing up for autonomous cars and drone delivery.
I know.
Which is mostly in urban areas.
Yep.
Not here.
There was recently, I happened to, admitting an aspect of myself being a complete, you know, policy nerd. I actually watched the entire C-SPAN episode of the T-Mobile Sprint merger hearing, and a lot of these issues came up. It was absolutely fascinating in terms of using the service to the rural underserved communities as a way of maybe being, whether or not that was a Trojan horse for other things being allowed that really weren't in service to that exact goal. It was a fascinating debate. But, yeah, we, we are fighting preemption issues all of the time. We're certainly facing it with affordable housing issues, you know, in terms of being preempted in terms of local discretion. One of the reasons I've been very consistent in pushing for us to do what we can within our character, because if we don't, I fear we're going to have that local discretion taken away from us, and we're going to have things enforced on us that we don't want, that we could have avoided if we'd been more proactive in other ways. It's been an abiding concern of mine. But, you know, that battle goes on constantly in terms of, there's additional preemption on the cellular, cell tower and cable service and that kind of thing by the state over and above the, what the federal government preempts. So, all I'm saying is that this is an ongoing discussion. I personally feel it's another example of the districting issue, okay? There, the, you know, California addressed a problem because of the Supreme Court decision with the federal civil rights rules and laws and the interpretation, decided they needed to step in and define the only state in the union of different civil rights to address a problem of underserved populations. And, yeah, you can pick out examples, mainly in very large cities, but then they apply it to everybody, no matter how small your city is, with no carve-out, which I think has dysfunctional and unintended consequences, because it's really hard to come up with one rule that applies to everybody without unintended consequences. But, the legislature in its wisdom has seen fit not to make any changes and show no interest to making any changes to address the small city issues in this matter, and so, you're seeing boom, 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 until anything changes legally, either in, through, you know, in the courts or in the legislature, there's really very little to do once the demographics show a certain differential effect of voting. So, again, that's an example of being preempted, and we just have to live with it as best we can. So, I'm sorry, I'm being a little long-winded.
No, no, you're exactly right. There, Congress doesn't give localities any discretion whatsoever, and the state is continuing to carve out more areas where localities have little or no discretion, because they've kind of used up all the other places where they control us, so they've got to find new ways to control us.
And, and to be fair, affordable housing is an issue.
Sure.
They see large jurisdictions trying, coming up with ways of thwarting, you know, legislative intent, and so, they, they feel like they have to react in terms of taking away local discretion, but it's often not well-crafted, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Very difficult to do, especially when you're dealing with the state of California, which is a larger economy than the United Kingdom, and...
The, just to add here on the affordable housing, so, at the Planning Commissioners Academy, which I found very, very interesting and really, really a good event to attend, they, of course, they said affordable housing is like at the top of the trend in terms of the state legislature, but they did say that it's going to be really important for cities to maintain their review authority to develop these objective, objective design standards, and that, that that's how the city will be able to maintain some level of aesthetic control and other end review.
Hence...
And so, vitally important that
Yes.
we do that maybe in conjunction with the general plan.
Right, and they gave very specific examples of some general plans about how they dictated facades and, you know, not having flat planes and how much things had to extend and all the, how far one mass could go before it had to change planes, and some of the examples that we saw of affordable housing were fantastic.
It, it, yeah, you can be, it can be implemented with good design.
Dense, high, wonderful.
There, yes, it can be done well, and I hope we do it well.
Yeah.
You know, all right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Just one other note I received as a part of my packet, a magazine called Western City. It was addressed to Rosalie Zabilla when she was Planning Commission Chair, but the, the cover article is about housing supply and affordability challenges for 2019, and if any member of the commission would like to read through this and then pass it along, I'd be happy to give it to you right now, otherwise I'll hold on to it.
Maybe we could, if we could pass it down, so we all have a chance?
You want to start? Okay, and next meeting, pass it on down the line. Yeah, or before.
I was going to say, we, we have the same mag, if you'd want, we could scan that and send it to you, because there's a copy of that exact issue, so you all have it at the same time.
There's still more than twenty pages, so it's a pretty big scan.
Otherwise, it's two months old.
Back to, just one last item, back to Mr. Wirex's discussion of providing documents to the commissioners. As many people know, I now represent one of the districts in the sanitary district, on the sanitary district board, and the sanitary district has issued each director an iPad, and we get our packets electronically with all the links. If you choose not to read all that material, then that's bad on you, but it's all there. And I note, for example, the CUP, the original CUP for the item three that we did not discuss tonight is thirty-five pages. That's a lot of paper to add to every packet, but there may be an electronic way to do all this if the council decides they want to do that. It would even take a load off Sherry having to put all these notebooks together every week, too, if they were issued electronically.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we get it mailed to us, emailed to us.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So, if you can just put all the links in there, there's links to, to one of the city's Google Drives, that's how I got a chance to look at some of that material.
Just to ask one question, would you want that in lieu of the hard copy, though? That, that's all, because I, I know I've seen this happen elsewhere, and then it's, you're at the meeting and you don't have the copy in front of you.
I do get frustrated when I can't add my little yellow notes, too.
I think the hard copy is essential, because you really have a lot of notes that you put on it.
That's my other question, is some, sometimes I, I think there's documents that aren't that germane, maybe a small part of it is.
Yeah, right.
And then it's like, well, you only gave me page ten, and that's seventy-one pages. Well, the other seventy had nothing to do with the issue, so I try to give you something that's pertinent.
Doing that electronically is a better idea.
So, that might be better where it's not something, say it's not a prior approval that has a lot of information in it, but something that could be referencing a longer document that would be good to know, but you maybe only need an excerpt of it. I think that would be better to provide the link.
Or, yeah, if you're, if you're calling out municipal code sections or state law sections, make it a link in the packet, then we should be good. Okay, any other business before the commission? If not, it is eight oh seven, and we are adjourned. Thank you.